Hello, sorry, we're starting a little late from our board workshop just went over a little bit, but it is now 6:08 PM on Monday, June 13. This is the Monday regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all five directors. Well, it is, okay, maybe. Well, here we have Director Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Johnson, and we believe Director Whitfield may or may not hop on Zoom. He's on. And Director Whitfield, we have Acting Superintendent Kim Whitworth, executive staff and members of our staff as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Members of the public can log into the special or the school board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions and obtain satisfactory answers from the Acting Superintendent, her staff, or through outside research. We're moving on to 2.04 on our agenda. It's the review of the agenda and we are modifying and adding 7.01. Accounts payable voucher was updated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as listed.
Is there a second?
Excuse me.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda dated June 13, 2022. All in favor, raise your hand. Chuck? Perfect. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay, moving on to agenda item 3.01, Student Director. Andrew, would you like to go first? Perfect.
So, not a whole lot going on. Well, in some ways, there's a lot going on because it's the end of the school year. But we had our last, SVC had our last ASB meeting, which was pretty nice. And had our last meetings for a lot of things, including the branch out group that I mentioned a couple of meetings ago. Basically, this is Sky Valley Social Club that meets on Friday at 12 for lunch. And so they had their last meeting, but they wanted to go into the next year and they might even expand the days. They might meet two times a week instead of one, which should be cool like this next school year. And what else has been going on? We had our orchestra concert, Sky Valley had it, which is pretty cool. And I think that was actually the last concert of the year. So there's going to be a little more music at the graduation. But so we're looking forward to that. And also, there's going to be a field day or I think some people call it Carnival Day at Sky Valley on Thursday. And so also it's kind of fun, just carnival games and field games and just people hanging out at Sky Valley. And trying to think what else happened. Yeah, so looking forward to the summer and hopefully some sun. And but yeah, hopefully. And also, we had our last, second to last Student Advisory Council meeting. As Mrs. Deanna mentioned, and we just kind of went over, asked us about some of the students about the perspective on CCDEI and staff training. And yeah, and there's one more tentative Student Advisory Council meeting scheduled and then it'll be close of that until next week. So I think that's all that happened as far as I can remember. But yeah, it's been a good school year and I'm really glad to be able to serve this in this role. And yeah, thank you.
Directors, any questions for Andrew? Andrew, what do you have planned for the summer? It's like the most exciting thing that you're looking forward to.
Our family is planning a cross-country road trip, which should be pretty exciting. And also planning on going to see our cousin in kind of near Oregon. And but probably the cross-country road trip. That would, that's pretty cool. Yeah.
That's so neat. I hope my son, when he's your age, feels the same way about being stuck in a car with his whole family. Thank you for sharing that, Andrew. All right, Nathan?
All right, we haven't had a meeting in a little while. So one of the things that we had since then was Memorial Day was awesome. I could reflect on the past and all the blessings that we have because of the sacrifices of others, which was really great. And there was a ceremony up at the cemetery, which was really awesome. Brought out the local garden stuff. And so it was great to reflect on. Then we had a graduation, which is kind of bittersweet. Kind of sad to see all my friends go, but a lot of them. And but also a lot of cool adventures going on. And we had an awesome assembly to send them off. And graduation was really good. And I had lots of performances and great stuff going on. Just students showing all their hard work that they've accomplished this year. And there's a lot of hard work that went into it. For the rest of the school year, students are finishing up at the high school, just all the work that they have trying to catch my classes and then finishing up any final products that they have. And other than that, a lot of busy work. But we had a Student Advisory Council, as you said, and went decently well, kind of had some disagreements, but it went pretty well. Talked through stuff and having those conversations was great. And most recently, at the high school today, we had a committee meeting, forgot what they called it, but it was a whole bunch of people, kind of leaders in the high school who got together. And we kind of brainstormed what we would like our high school to look like in a whole bunch of different settings, got the sticky notes, always nice. And I think it's just a great way to get insights and idea of how we can move forward. And I'm glad that the administration is doing this and hopefully can carry that stuff out and make a solid high school next year. And overall, I'm very happy with our progress this year. And I think that most of us have learned a lot. It's been great. Thank you.
Any questions for Nathan?
Does it feel empty up at MHS now with the seniors not being there?
Yeah, I came to the high school today and I found out the senior's gone. The unofficial senior parking lot is mostly empty. So the juniors, who are now practically seniors, can park there. So, yeah, it does.
Awesome. Thank you both for your reports. We appreciate you. Okay, and moving on to agenda item 4.01, Audience Comments. We welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes, and concerns. I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, if several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to the representative. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please contact any staff member and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during a speaker's comments, their words begin to approach a personnel concern, I will remind the speaker once to keep the comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes, or concerns. If that speaker continues with staff-related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, please contact any staff member to help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. You may provide public comments virtually if you are attending the meeting via Zoom. Otherwise, we have forums in the back room that you are still able to fill out. And we have two public comments on Zoom. Yes, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hey, Melanie, yes. Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Yep, my name is Melanie Ryan. I am the Board President of Monroe Equity Council. And I had two kids go through the Monroe School District. So, good evening, everyone. Directors and Acting Superintendent Whitworth. First, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize the recent progress that we've made as a district, building a diverse, inclusive, equitable, and anti-racist culture. There's been the Student Council, there's been the Task Force and Wazla Partnership, we heard earlier in the workshop, the North Star Guiding Document Assembly and Interventions. And I really wanted to call it Acting Superintendent Whitworth's prioritization and commitment along with Deanna, Deanna, sorry, that we heard earlier today too, who I know she has been working tirelessly on moving our district forward as well. We also collectively know this isn't enough, right? We know that. We know this through many signals, through the daily racial violence that continues to happen in our schools. Calls to us again this week from parents, new parents, parents we haven't heard from before through the data and so on and so forth. But perhaps there's no more for painful way that we know this than the Black children and families that showed up in this meeting a few weeks ago. They pled with us, they pled with this board to do better. So along these lines, we were very encouraged and are very encouraged to see the proposal to work with courageous conversations. Courageous conversations, as you know, you heard about in the workshop, is internationally recognized for leading schools, both K through 12 and higher ed, businesses, individuals to transformative change towards belonging and empowerment for everyone. And yes, everyone. Monroe will be lucky to be able to work with the educators, facilitators, and coaches of this caliber that courageous conversation brings. You are likely going to receive some pushback. You are likely going to receive some noisy pushback. When you do, we ask you to remember the Black children and families who came to you a few weeks ago, when you were, and when you consider your vote, we ask you to remember that. We ask you to remember LGBTQ families who've been up here. We've asked you to remember the Native American families and other BIPOC families that have been coming for years and years and years before these boards. This community is ready despite the noise. They are ready, they have shown us this, they have shown you this by continually coming forward, by the actions they've taken this year in many ways and many forms that have been painful, but we are ready. Will this take time and resources? Yes, yes, it's going to. In the workshop, I looked it up, the Monroe School District was formed in 1869. That's what the Historical Society says. So it's been over 150 years to create and maintain the culture that we have today. So we need to invest in this work as long as it takes to undo the harmful parts of our culture that have been built since that time and persist day in and day out. Is it scary? Absolutely, yes. I've done this work myself. It is scary. But it isn't the conversation that is causing the division. If you take nothing away from tonight, it is this. It is not the conversation that is causing the difference. Actually, it's our complete inability to have the conversation at all. We must have the conversation. To avoid the conversation is a privilege because so many families have told us over and over and over, they don't have a choice to ignore and not have this conversation. They don't get a choice to say all skin color is just a human. They don't get that choice because their children are being bullied and harassed and harmed because of the color of their skin. We also know that what we have been doing now isn't working. We can't keep doing the same thing. It is time to do something different. Director Bumpus, thank you. Oh my God, thank you. Your leadership in tonight's workshop, I'm going to try not to get emotional here, brought hope and accountability that so many have been desperate to have. And after a long year for you guys, for us, for our families, to be ending on this note that you talked about, that you held us all accountable to in that statement of 2020 that showed us we haven't done anything that we promised our community, that we promised our kids. There is too many dark days, too many families fear that we would never get to the point where our board said this. We see and we appreciate your commitment and passion. We are honored to partner going forward in any way that builds an inclusive, anti-racist culture and amnesty. We invite tonight all of the board to be courageous. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Hi, Mindy.
Hello.
Hi. Can I please have you share your name and your relationship to the school district?
My name's Mindy Haas and I'm a teacher at Monroe High School and I'm the Monroe Education Association Vice President-elect for the upcoming year.
So are yours.
Thank you. As an educator, one of the first lessons I teach my students is that of accountability. Webster defines accountability as an obligation or willingness to accept responsibility or to account for one's actions. Upon reading the report from the Seville investigation, it's become abundantly clear that the Monroe School District, led by Justin Blasco, has been lacking in accountability for their actions for multiple years. Two years ago, in May of 2020, one of my colleagues stood before you and warned that the Monroe School District was creating a toxic work environment. And because of this toxicity, many of your best educators were going to leave. Here we stand, two years later, with 22 teachers resigning so far this year alone. That number doesn't include our paraeducators, substitutes, custodians, district office staff, bus drivers, administrators, or school support staff that are also resigning. The toxic environment and my colleague's prediction proved true. So my question for you is, my question for you, the Monroe School Board, is when will this change? We have asked for the resignation of Justin Blasco and he has shown an unwillingness to take accountability for his own actions and will not do what's best for kids. So the matter lies in your hands. Will you enforce the lessons of accountability that we teach our students? Will you end the toxicity within our district? Will you make the right decision that will guide the Monroe School District into a brighter future? Again, I repeat, the decision lies in your hands. Are you going to hold yourself accountable to fulfill the pledge as a publicly elected school board member to provide the best educational environment possible to the students of Monroe? Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Okay, we've got a stack tonight, just giving you the heads up. Okay, so first up, we have Janelle Lewis. And speaking on behalf of a group. Okay, name and relationship to the school district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janelle Lewis. I am a parent of a slew of children in the district, seven to be exact. And I'm also an employee of the district. So firstly, I want to talk about the Equity Institute that I had the pleasure of being a part of at Park Place this past week. So it was the Equity Institute with Vincent Perez. And I have to be honest, so the first set of assemblies, my sixth grader was a part of. And there were some things in the assembly that made her feel uncomfortable. And so I spoke with the principal, you know, we discussed that. And I spoke with her and we dealt with that. So I was able to attend when the seventh graders did it on that Thursday. And I'm going to be honest, going in, Mama Bear was on because my daughter had felt like really uncomfortable. And I was like, oh my gosh, right? But I wanted to be a part of it, right? Because that's important. So I came out of that assembly just feeling amazing. And I'm going to tell you, I was very skeptical. I was very pessimist about it. I was like, no. But it was so amazing to see. Now, they needed some crowd control, I will say that. With their seventh graders, right? Needed some crowd control. But I have to honestly say, going around to the different groups that they broke out into and actually engaging with the students and seeing how they felt, it was amazing. It was amazing. And it was at this point that I realized that a lot of what students do, do in school, the racism and things like that, it's not them. Because when you have them like by themselves and you're like talking and you're sharing, like they're really smart and they're really kind. You know, just sometimes that doesn't come out, you know? But it was amazing. So I'm going to tell you the part I had a problem with. So they do the doll, they showed the doll experiment. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. But it's where you show little kids, probably about three or four, you show them a black doll and you show them a white doll. And you ask them, which one do you think is the good doll? Which one do you think is the bad doll? And that is, I really, I implore everyone to Google it on YouTube and watch it. It's very powerful. So in this video, right, you have young children and they're asking them, which doll is bad? All of the children say that the black doll is bad, right? And they say that the white doll is good. That's what, out of the mouths of babes, that's what they said. Talk about being uncomfortable, right? My black daughter was in that assembly, right? My black son was in that assembly. And you have dolls up here, right? Being a black one and a white one, clearly, which one's good? Which one's bad? Which one's nice? Which one mean? Nothing positive came when they held the black dolls up, right? Talk about discomfort, right? But if my sixth and seventh graders can sit through that, then we can have some uncomfortable conversations with some staff. We can do that. That's what we can do because it's necessary. It is necessary. It's so necessary. You know, I'm going to say, I'm glad that I got a little bit of the workshop, you know, and I heard what you shared, Director Barnes. And while I wouldn't wish feelings of discomfort or uncomfortability, if that's even a word, on anyone, sometimes you have to feel that discomfort to realize that change needs to come, right? How do you know a baby's on the way? Because you have contractions, right? It doesn't feel good, right? But on the other side, there's a beautiful baby. And my children have been through a lot of racism in this district. And no one knows how it feels unless you've been through it, right? So we have families who didn't want their kids wearing masks. We have families who don't want CRT. And no one knows how it feels as a person of color to go to a place every day where you feel like you don't belong, right? No, no one knows that unless you're a person of color. So we're not saying like white people are bad. I like white people. I'm going to tell you that right now. I love white people. I love you. But at the end of the day, unfortunately, over 400 years ago, Black people, people who look like me, were enslaved and dehumanized, chains around their neck, around their feet. And that's history. We cannot change history. But what we can do is, we can face reality. And the reality of it is, we need to have courageous, uncomfortable conversations. We don't want, I don't want any child to feel like they're being targeted. But my kids are. And I'm not saying, yeah, your child should feel like that. But in an effort to work together to make everyone feel included, we can't just sit here and say, we're going to have kumbaya, yay, it's all okay. Let's teach people, there's no color, we're all colorblind. That's a misnomer. We are trained to see color. But what we're trying to do is to help others not make decisions or treat people differently because of that color. I want you to see that I'm black. I love my blackness and I want you to see that. So it's not really, oh, we're colorblind. No, we are all different and we have to celebrate that. We have to acknowledge that. So that's, I mean, I'm all for the courageous conversations, I'm all for that. But you know, I love everybody. Okay, lastly, I want to talk about, I had the honor of attending the kickoff to Juneteenth in Marysville this past Saturday. And I passed out to you all just a little packet. So it was amazing to me to attend this event because it was not only put on by Change the Narrative, you can look them up on Facebook, but in partnership with the city of Marysville and the Marysville School District. And I had the honor of speaking there. And it was just a wow moment for me, right? Because to see everyone like come together, to see everyone support Juneteenth, which is another piece of history we cannot change, June 19, 1865. It just, it makes for a better like working together, like just partnership, right? I support you, you support me, whether you're Black, white, indigenous, Hispanic, Asian. We support each other and we work together. And that's how you really make everyone feel included, right? So it was just amazing. They have an Executive Director of Equity and Family Engagement. Amazing, like look her up, just amazing. So the stuff that I shared with you guys right there, it's basically their equity statement. I don't know if we have one, but I do know that you guys did back in 2020 release a board statement on equity. But like something like that, I feel would be beneficial to like have maybe at every school or just have out there, because you know, some of our families don't really use computers and stuff like that. So to have something printed out in the front, it's English, on the back it's Spanish, just to have something like that ready so they know what we're talking about when we talk about equity, right? So they know, you know, yeah, we could be talking about computers, but really what we're talking about is the disparities, you know, in the different ethnic groups and all that stuff. So anyways, I said lastly last time, but this is really lastly. I gave you a flyer to Juneteenth here in Monroe. I am the event coordinator. I would love if everyone could stop by. Everyone, come by, celebrate Juneteenth with us. We love you, hopefully you love me. We're going to have some good music, we're going to have some good food and just celebrate June 19, 1865, when my people were really free. So thank you for your time. Have a great day and yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Janelle. Jolene? Jolene? Individual.
Hi.
Hi. Can you please share your name and your relationship to this district?
Yeah, my name is Jolene Robert, and I have a seven-year-old in this district. Happy anniversary to Acting Superintendent Whitworth. I too am married to someone of a different race, an immigrant, actually. We have a child together. We are a multi-generational household. My father-in-law that remembers the violent partition of India lives with us. We are a Christian conservative household. And as a family, we have found that courageous conversations is dangerously divisive. I've done my own research. We did our research as a family. And then hearing the quotes from Director Barnes was also alarming. I just think there has to be another way, another avenue that doesn't have so much division wrapped into it. One that maybe doesn't cost as much as this one. I wonder where the district will get the money for it. And one that may not have as many lawsuits surrounding it. So it's shocking to me that the book is not recommended or required by by everyone before a vote is, is rendered. I think that that is so important. Because even though I did some research, hearing the quotes that I know that that Molly had read were, were shocking. And I know that there's a lot of talk that it should be and that, that it should shock me. And that those conversations are really hard. But I just, I just can't see how division, more division is gonna bring us, bring us together. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jolene. And next we have Anadiya. Am I saying that correctly? Anadiya, that's way prettier. All right, Anadiya, your name and your relationship to the school district.
My name's Anadiya, and I have three boys in this whole district. Before I read my letter, I just wanted to thank the board for the work that you guys do. I do appreciate your dedication and your desire to make Monroe a better school district. The purpose of this letter is to provide the Monroe School District Board with a parent's perspective. I'm not naive in thinking that this letter will result in immediate change in policy or curriculum within the Monroe School District. However, I do feel it's important for the board to see the downsides of the recent district and state-level actions that have trickled down to the MSD policy, procedure, and curriculum changes. In my opinion, the biggest downside to the Monroe School District is that there are no options for a core curriculum-only education for children. I see an overall shift happening in public education and within Monroe School District, one that demonstrates that parents are no longer valued as the primary stakeholder in their children's education. Recent policy changes empower schools and staff members to promote their moral mandates and worldviews within the school setting. I believe that these policy changes shift the educator's role away from what most parents desire and certainly what I desire, which is for a public education to teach the core subjects of reading, writing, math, science, and technology. I'm specifically opposed to my children being taught the district's newly adopted curriculum on sexual education. While I realize my child could be opted out of this unit, I can't opt my child out of other conversations that will no doubt take place around campus from students being taught new material too young and too in-depth. I also specifically disagree with the social-emotional curriculum being taught as part of general education in regular class time. It's my opinion that kids who want and need education in these areas should be taught in groups as needed by school counselors and psychologists in correlation with their parents' desires. I choose to teach my kids our values and morals at home, and I don't want or need a public educator whose skillset is teaching reading, writing, math, or science to teach on social issues, sexual education, gender identity, or social-emotional curriculum. I believe that these are topics that we, as parents, are responsible to teach in our own home. Should a parent wish not to teach on these topics at home or becomes unable to do so, only in that circumstance. Should individual children have additional time outside of regular class time to work with a trained counselor, psychologist, and their parent or guardian? Because Monroe School District has embraced some of the more controversial state-level policy and curriculum changes, my spouse and I have decided to take the necessary step to unenroll our three kids from the Monroe School District. As a result of our decision, there will be a loss of approximately $45,000 in funding this year from our family alone. I know more than five other families who have made the same decision in the last year, and many more who are debating this decision after the current school year's events and issues. Beyond the loss of per-student funding, there's also the loss of levy and bond support for the Monroe Public Schools, given the need to now privately pay for education options that more closely fit our family's needs. We've chosen to enroll our three children in a private education setting, and the basis for this decision is that this type of educational setting recognizes that a student's parents are the primary stakeholders in a child's education. And they're willing to partner with parents by choosing core curriculum and offering options if they're requested. Many alternative educational settings are embracing that commitment and supporting parents who exercise that right. Monroe School District is showing it simply doesn't agree. My family is one of the many families in Monroe School District who value being involved in our child's education. My spouse and I are both products of our K-12 education that we received from Monroe School District. We have volunteered our time. We've lent a hand, offered a sincere thank you to staff for the work that they do. We are present and involved when our children make poor choices and need support from principals and counselors. In addition, I worked for the district for three years. Times have certainly changed, and based on that direction we see Monroe School District taking, we don't feel welcomed or heard any longer. For example, just last week, Park Place Middle School had an opportunity to partner with parents and create trust in regard to their Equity and Inclusion Workshop for sixth and seventh graders. Although I've only been provided with parts of the material from the assembly, thus far, I don't disagree with anything that was presented. However, the lack of transparency by the school prior to the assembly and then immediately following it shows the bigger issue at work here. If administrators wanted to demonstrate trust and partnership with parents, they should have been upfront and provided all materials prior to the assembly in an email or newsletter with video links to parents, similarly to how the district provides information prior to sexual education units being taught at elementary and middle school level. That didn't happen. The second best option would have been for administrators to immediately address the misinformation that was circulating in our community and on social media by sending a district-wide newsletter or email with all video links and materials that had been presented to students. That didn't happen. Instead, when I emailed the administrators at Park Place Middle School as a concerned parent and specifically asked for the materials presented, administrators placated my concern by sharing the reason for the assembly and the positive things that came from it. I specifically asked a second time for all materials presented to be provided to me, and I was told by the administrator that they did not have the video links that were shown at that time. I find it very hard to believe in this day and age that links cannot be made immediately available to a parent. This example demonstrates the district's attitude that parents shouldn't be involved, and when they try to be, they're pushed aside. Often, the loudest voices get heard, and the silent majority remains silent. I'm not looking for a headline. I would rather be a gentler voice, one that simply shares my decision with the board. I want to encourage other parents who are unhappy with the recent changes to respond and take action respectfully and thoughtfully. The best way to do this is to share your concern with the board, and if necessary, remove your children from public education. There are many alternative options, and not all are costly. If there are parents who hear this letter tonight and are interested in more information about alternative schooling options in the greater Monroe area, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to share any contacts for the many alternative options that embrace a parent's right to be the primary stakeholder in their child's education. I truly hope that our kids being enrolled in, being unenrolled from Monroe School District will be a temporary situation, and that with change from the district and the state, we can once again return our kids to the Monroe School District and partner with the district towards providing the desired education for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Honora. We have Robin next. All right, Robin, your name and your relationship to the district.
My name is Robin Hayashi, and I am a proud educator of sixth-grade students at Park Place Middle School. I am also the president of the Monroe Education Association. And I also raised my two boys in this community, and they're both MHS graduates. So first off, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Acting Superintendent Whitworth, thank you. Diane Hermes, thank you. For your hard work and your consideration of the CCDI work that we so desperately need in this district, thank you. I want to I want to let you know that this work is desperately needed. A privilege I have is that I hear from members, educators, and I also hear from students. And I hear that we have students who are feeling not included. They're feeling not just not included at school, they're feeling targeted, they're feeling not welcome. And school is hard enough without our students having to face that type of a hostile environment at school. Our staff is feeling like they don't know how to help, and we're hearing cries for some kind of training. We need assistance. We need to know how to have these conversations in the moment. We need to know how to help our students and how to help each other. I want you to trust the task force and the focus group and know that we did not take this work lightly. But we know that something needs to be done, and this feels like the right step. We need courageous conversations to help us build that foundation so that we can make this district more welcoming for all of our students, no matter their skin color, their gender identity. Our kids deserve that, and our educators need to know how best to support our students and each other. I'm urging you, and I think that Melanie might have said this earlier, but I'm urging you to be strong and know that we don't take this work lightly. There were difficult conversations in those task forces, in those focus groups. But we know that this is the right program to get us started, to move us in the right direction. And I'm urging you to please just be strong and think about those kids who are feeling so isolated and ostracized because of their skin color. It's a privilege to be able to say that this can wait, or that, you know, people are gonna feel uncomfortable. Yeah, but we've got kids and we've got staff members who are uncomfortable every single day, and it's beyond their control. And it's up to us to face this head-on and start to do the tough work. It's past time. Inheriting this role as the president of the Educational Association, I know that the previous president, for years, has begged for this type of work to start. We recognize the problem years ago. As you said, President Bumpus, you know, it's more than just two years ago. We've been urging for this to happen. Our kids deserve better. Our staff deserves better. So please, just be strong and help us move in the right direction. Get us started. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. David? Hi, David. Can I have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Yes, hello. My name is David Malgoza. I am a former graduate of Monroe High School. Graduated year of 2020. I'm currently at the University of Washington, Seattle. I'm a pre-law major, and I'm here to talk about my experiences at Monroe High School and why it's very integral into this conversation we are having today. Kind of just to start off, so as I said, I graduated the year of 2020. And during my time at the Monroe High School, I saw Black Lives Matter protests, posters, and Black Student Union posters ripped from the halls of the Monroe High School. I had my friends and I called racial slurs, and I felt what it means to be a Latino and a person of color in the Monroe School District. You cannot diminish this problem and say that it is, and label it as a problem of empathy and caring. Because these high school students have had years to learn how to act with empathy, so that line of analysis is innately flawed. This is a racism problem, a problem that has seeped into my year and future years, and that is going to impact, impact more people that look like me and from my own communities. While you, Molly, may not understand how whiteness plays a part in these oppressive systems, either from the fragility of your whiteness or the intentional blindness to the systems that put you in the position that you sit in today, but that does not reflect the feelings of BIPOC students in the Monroe School District. Whiteness plays a part in the construction of this country, to the oppression of BIPOC communities, to the destruction of BSU posters in MHS. You do not know what it feels like to be a person of color in the classrooms. You do not understand what racial oppression feels like. The argument that the system is broken is an illogical fallacy because these systems are working exactly how they were meant to build. They're founded, they're founded on division and racism, and that is what we see in the Monroe High School today. These trainings of DEI are important to allow for conversations and allow this next generation of leaders to come from this district, come from these schools, and actually understand how to, like, engage with these conversations of DEI. Because as our world becomes more diverse, these students are lacking a key part in engaging with these different racial identities and these different types of people. And to keep them away from learning and understanding how to engage with this newfound kind of realization of where our world is heading, it's just going to impact, detriment onto our students. So this is why this DEI training is important, and the resistance reflects the fear of divisiveness. But rather, we need to see how these systems are divisive, and that is why whiteness is so integral in seeing how the construction of these systems were made to prioritize people of white skin color and marginalized people of color. And to say that we are scared of that is this kind of deflecting from the real problem that is at hand. And that's why I believe, and a lot of students at the Monroe High School believe that these, this type of training is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Janine? Hi, Janine. Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
I'm Janine Burkhardt, and I've lived in the area for, what, over 30 years? And raised two daughters in the Monroe School District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm extremely concerned from the last Monroe Board meeting for the children, our children, in the Monroe School District, and especially for their safety. If the Monroe School District chooses to remove ultimate serious consequences to children who error, all children are here in school to be taught how to be contributing, law-abiding citizens. If they choose to break the rules and harm others, then all possible safety nets will be removed, and the crucial, this crucial net will be gone to those being bullied, those who are persecuted, as well as the perpetrator themselves. Monroe School must have expulsion and must have many uncomfortable results for children who cross the line. There is a zero tolerance for anyone allowing, allowed to hurt anyone in school. No child can learn under unsafe conditions, and all children can stray over that do-not-cross line if they know there are no consequences. if they know there are no consequences for their actions. Law in society, it's there for a purpose, and the same for schools. You can question the child all you like, but the law must stand. And that is our job. We are supposed to be teaching the children. Nature, human nature, tends to go towards doing wrong, unfortunately. Lack of observable consequences emboldens errant acts. And please do not trust statistics unless you've gathered them firsthand for yourself, because statistics can be skewed in so many different directions. For the sake of our children, have observable consequences taught to all the children, stand by them, protect all of them. If you do not, I do urge all parents to begin homeschooling. Because school dreams are just a drop in the bucket away. I mean, they'll begin to happen even in our schools if we don't stand up. Anyway, I definitely encourage parents to homeschool. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. I can't read the first name, but last name Potter.
Hi.
Hi. Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Yes, my name is Delilah Potter, and I have two students, a sixth grader and a fourth grader. So I'm here tonight to express my frustration with the schools excluding parent volunteers who have not received the COVID shot. Both of our kids started Chain Lake Elementary in kindergarten. And at that time of the school closures in 2020, they were in second and fourth grade. Since the beginning, my husband and I have made a conscious effort to be present and involved in supporting our kids and school. My husband spent two to three days a year as part of the watchdog program. And once the dates were on the calendar, it was a big deal. The kids look forward to those days all year long. Depending on the year, I volunteered at least on field trips. And then, once both kids attended, I was also able to volunteer in each of their classes or where needed, weekly. I didn't volunteer because it was easy or convenient or because I had to, but because I knew that it was important to make it a priority and that it was worth it. My kids are worth it, your kids are worth it, and our schools and teachers are worth it. I have a real issue with sending my kids in the fall to a school that I'm not welcome in. The Monroe School District needs to stop excluding parent volunteers based on vaccination status, specifically the COVID vaccine. You can catch COVID and you can transmit COVID regardless of your COVID vaccination status. Why are some parents being excluded based on this very thing? I understand that these past few years have required a lot of observation and reevaluation. And it's time to reevaluate and make a change. Please figure out how to make this right. Speak up for our parents, for the parents in this district. It doesn't have to be this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Delilah. And I have Michael Jones. Michael, hi. Can I have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Sure. My name is Michael Jones, and I'm the father of two students at Salem Woods. And I'm also a special education teacher at Salem Woods. It's been a year. As staff and students went back to full-time in-person learning this year, held so much promise, so much potential. And in some regards, it delivered. Many rejoiced at a return to some semblance of normalcy. We also were able to re-adjust to yet another phase of this pandemic, hoping an end was in sight. And during the course of this crazy year, students learned. Students achieved both in and out of the classroom. And as stewards of education, parents and educators have all done our best until we knew better. Then when we knew better, we did better. But it's been a year. In the fall, a school psych and former Monroe admin was arrested at the high school, charged with a heinous crime. Racist incidents and attacks that have a dark and painful history in this community have perpetuated and escalated in our schools, leading to fear and uncertainty. And we very sadly and unexpectedly lost colleagues this year, such as incredible coworkers in our transportation and tech departments, both whom passed away very unexpectedly. No matter how much good this year has brought, we must also acknowledge what has not gone so well. It's been a year. One with a failed levy coinciding with an investigation report regarding our superintendent, the result of which validated some of our worst fears, that a leader called upon to work with all parties, all stakeholders, and all community members instead was putting his own interests above the interests of the community and students. According to the report, among other issues, he created a culture of us against them, insulted many, set a horrible example during crisis, cost the district some amazing staff members, and has cost the taxpayers much more. It's been a year, but this year is not over yet. And so many things, how it ends is how it was. After all, a student's final grade only counts at the end of a semester. And likewise, the school board has its own final exam yet to finish before the year is complete. That being the future leadership of our district. Monroe Public Schools requires leaders who will say the right things, who will do the right things, and can lead by example, especially during a crisis. I pray we all know by now who that leader cannot be, not with the broken trust and toxic environment left in his wake. Too much suffering has occurred to the ultimate detriment of our students. Our students and community have lost good teachers. We have lost caring counselors, and we have lost beloved principals. Our families deserve to know that every school member, including the school board, all of us, will strive to benefit the learning, safety, and security of all students. And all does in fact mean all. To summarize, we cannot continue toward a brighter future with Dr. Blasko as superintendent. For our community, for all district staff, and most importantly, for our children, either ask him to resign or let him go immediately. After all, it's been a year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
That's it. That's all public comments. I'd like to just say thank you, everyone, for sharing and being so vulnerable and honest during those public comments. I know there are a lot of feelings in the room. So I just want to thank everyone for showing up. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, ELL/Title Report with Chris Cronis, our Executive Director of Categorical Programs in Elementary Education. And it sounds like you're going to give us a report on the English Language Learner, ELL, and Title Programs. Sound about right?
My name is Chris Cronis. I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Education and Categorical Programs for the district. And I am going to speak about our title program and the ELL program here in the district. So first, Title 1. What is it? Every school district in the country is allocated federal funding to serve students for whom their community income affects their ability to access school and impacts their ability to be successful. So the Fed provides additional support and funding to these communities in the form of dollars that require a tremendous amount of oversight. So each year, we are provided title funding for specifically a school-wide program. And that's Frank Wagner Elementary. In the past, Park Place Middle School has also achieved the income status to receive funding. But unfortunately, the income status over time has fallen below the threshold needed to receive the dollars. So it's been a few years since they've received funding. So this upcoming school year, we expect about $513,000 to be allocated to Frank Wagner. And this is a decrease. And one of the questions that came from the board, which I did try to address, respond to, was why? Well, we're seeing actually increased levels of income in Monroe community at large. That affects the overall locations that we receive as a school district. The one thing that's going to look different over time is something I mentioned to Director Campbell earlier when we spoke before the start of the workshop, is that we're starting to see concentrations of wealth. And this is pretty typical. We're seeing this nationwide, where there are concentrations of wealth in parts of the city, and then concentrations of poverty in other parts of the city. So we're just starting to see more and more disparity. So that's one of the reasons why Frank Wagner remains the sole title school in the district. We've managed to purchase quite a bit with the title funding that we do receive, 2.2 FTE for Frank, 36 hours per week of parent support, professional learning. Frank Wagner's benefited from working with Lucia Roca, who is an expert in English and Spanish literacy. And she's been providing support to the school for a couple of years now, offering instructional strategies to teachers and giving them direct, in-classroom coaching to support their students. Intervention support in the form of actual teachers who are providing additional supports outside the classroom, inside the classroom, and then helping with building the plan and how to support students as a school as a whole, and then a curriculum purchase as well. Let's click the curriculum purchased is posted there. We've increased the number of Level Literacy Intervention Kits, for example, which is an evidence-based Tier 2 practice that we use to support students who are not reading at grade level, providing Just Write books. Those are books that every kid can access at their reading level, and those are in classrooms. So we essentially, we've made more robust classroom libraries in addition to the main library that the school has. We've just undergone the purchase of Esteta, which is a phonics curriculum in Spanish for our dual-language program. Pardon me. And we also have purchased as a pilot Hagerty. One of the things we know we need to do, pardon me, based on the science of reading and all the research around early literacy, is improve upon our delivery of phonetic awareness, phonological awareness work with our youngest readers. The kids who've been exposed to this curriculum, when it's done with fidelity, have seen some pretty extraordinary gains. And real proud of that, actually. I'm going to show you something a little bit about that. So shifting away from Title, before I move on, actually, do you have any questions about Title 1? Excuse me. Good. Okay. So moving into multilingual learners, English language learners. This has come up at a previous board meeting where I had mentioned that we're moving away from the term "English Language Learner." And one of the reasons why we're doing this is that the term is somewhat limiting. It doesn't give credence to the experiences students actually having. A five-year-old who shows up to school having only spoken Spanish at home is not just learning English. They're still learning Spanish. He's five, right? So we want to acknowledge that, recognize that, and celebrate it, because it's an asset. Unfortunately, in American education, one of the issues we've had for many, many years is that we've looked at our multilingual learners through a deficit mindset, a deficit lens. We have to fix them. They're not speaking English. We need to give them more English. One of the problems with the mindset is that it unfortunately doesn't actually recognize how language is acquired and the science behind that. One of the things we know about language acquisition is that if you are proficient in your first language, your primary language, it makes you much, much more able to and successful in acquiring a second, third, or fourth language. And that's outlined there in the slide. Additionally, what it also does is it celebrates and helps sustain the culture and language from which that student comes. And that is incredibly important, because that is a culturally competent approach to addressing the needs we have around equity, diversity, inclusivity in the school district. So it acknowledges that students learning their primary language, not just English, we're helping them sustain their culture and language. And it increases a sense of belonging at school. And that's been kind of mentioned here and there at the time. Even one of the comments, or a public comment, was about the sense of belonging. And we know, based on all the evidence out there and a lot of the research around how you develop schools that are safe and inclusive, it's when everyone feels like they belong. So by doing this, we increase the likelihood that kids feel like they belong in the school, because they feel like they're respected and honored. So we serve about 717 students district-wide, which is roughly 12% of our overall population. And recently, the shift that we're making, this started in spring of last year. We started training on what's referred to as WEDA. WEDA is a shift from, unfortunately, when it was first introduced, folks thought it was simply a test, right? We used to administer something called the ALPA-21. Prior to that, it was called the ALPA. So that was the English Language Proficiency Assessment. What the state of Washington has done over the last couple of years is decide based on a pretty large research, excuse me, body of evidence, that we needed to shift away from using the ALPA and adopting the WEDA standards. The WEDA standards have been adopted by 41 US states, territories, and federal agencies. It's a huge consortium that exists internationally. It's used all over the place. And this shift has allowed us to really reflect on what we're doing. It's also increased the rigor. So it's actually much, much more difficult to achieve proficiency on WEDA, thereby giving us a better idea how successful our kids are going to be once they stop receiving the supports and are exposed to only the academic language they see on a regular basis in the classroom. That shift usually takes about seven years, if it's done really, really well. Unfortunately, we have some work to do. So we've administered the test as we were supposed to. Our teachers did a phenomenal job. All of our ELL teachers actually engaged in this work last spring. We gave them a full day, and that wasn't even enough time to work together here at the district office to learn the framework, really dig into it. And it's a big, big lift, because the framework is actually pushing folks to think much, much more deeply about how this work interplays with all disciplines and not sits as a standalone, I'm the ELL teacher, I'm going to come and help out your kids today. It's about how we integrate fluency work and English language development strategies into all of the work that we do in every single one of our classrooms every day. So what I want to do is first start with some celebrations. So Frank Wagner has done a pretty phenomenal job this year. It has been a year. Michael's still here, but it has been a year. It's been a hell of a year. And one of the things that a lot of us were really concerned about was the impact ongoing of the pandemic on the success of our kids. But what we know is that when great teachers are given good materials that they know how to use, they can make up for those losses and our teachers have in many respects. This data alone speaks volumes to some of the work that's been done. The fact that when kids came to school, there was only one kid out of all the kindergartners who knew all their letter sounds. Now, 80% of them do. We're developing readers, okay? 57% of our kindergartners at Frank Wagner are standard. The data coming out of second grade at Frylands is phenomenal. We have kids who've made two years of growth this year, this crazy school year we've had. We're still seeing enormous growth across the system. Our third-grade students at Frank Wagner, their math scores are through the roof. They're just crushing it. So we've got a lot of success here. Unfortunately, we've been talking a lot about things that aren't going so hot, but I just want to bring our attention to this. Now, we still have work to do, quite a bit. Are we to dead is not so hot. Unfortunately, this is a statewide issue. I have actually already been in touch with OSPI about connecting with a work group that can examine what we're doing differently, what we can do differently to support our kids. Unfortunately, only 34 out of the 717 students we serve met standard in WEDA, and eight of those kids are kindergartners. That means we've worked to do with the instructional practices. But this is also the first time we've done it. And we also know that the trend we're seeing in the data says that we need to look at writing and what we can do to support our students' writing. and what we can do to support our students' writing better because that is that is an area of growth for us. Something else I just want to share here too is that we're now required by OSPI to provide a little more context and data around our plans for how we serve our our MLL students, including the data that's going to drive a professional development plan. So if you look here, only about 30% of our our MLL students met standard in ELA and only about 24% in math. And we're we're missing data on a bunch of kids. And that that in itself is something I question because it appears that either they didn't take the test and make do the makeup and they just kind of disappeared on us. That's concerning because we we're not exactly certain as to what happened there. And then if you, the the, I think, though, the the more important data points in one of the bottom. So if you can run your eyes down there. Long-term ELs is, there's a, there's a big issue around long-term English language learning learners. What we know, based on just a huge body of research, is that once kids hit the five-year mark or so with support for multilingual and language acquisition, English language acquisition, is that they they plateau. So what ends up happening is that they don't necessarily become proficient in their primary language, and then they don't necessarily become proficient in their secondary language. And then there is a huge self-concept issue where all of a sudden we see kids who just plateau and sit there for literally years. So by the time an MLL kid gets to the high school and they've been in it for five or more years, we're looking at almost two, or about two-thirds of our kids at the high school have been in MLL for over five years. That's something we need to address. We have to address as a as a system, we need to address this. So a couple of ways we can is by utilizing English language development strategies. And these strategies were rolled out last spring, earlier than that. And it was just a coordinated effort by our MLL teachers to to identify the three strategies we're going to focus on. They did an amazing job with it, actually presented on this last spring, I think, about this time. And we've been pushing that and rolling it out on an ongoing basis for the last year, essentially. We have still have a lot of growth there. We did a self-assessment where teachers provided input to their school leader about the frequency with which they're using those strategies. And we got roughly half saying they're using them regularly. We need that number much, much higher than that. The other thing we need to remember is that we are, we need to support our content-based instructional content, we need to support content-based instruction. So we need to help social studies teachers utilize these strategies. We need to help our music teachers utilize these strategies, our PE teachers utilize these strategies, anyone, not just our ELA teachers. So we're, when we think about equity, diversity, inclusion, cultural competency, this is it. This is the work, a portion of it, not all of it. This is an important part of the work because we need to know what the actual, you know, executable strategies are in addition to the work that really allows us to have some of these really big conversations, hard conversations that have been referenced over the course of both the workshop earlier and then the public comment. So with that, questions?
I'm glad, Director, I know you have questions.
Speaking my love language, Chris, right now, come on somebody. I am concerned, I'm a, I'm a language teacher, this is my thing. I am concerned with the WIDA data that we're missing over a third of our ELA data. Is there any follow-up we can do to figure out where did the students not come? Was it past the threshold of the of the deadline? Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. We, the, one of the things, let's go back to that slide, actually, this one you're talking about, right? 35% and 14% math. Yeah, 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 that one. So one of the things that that it it's going to take a minute to figure this one out because the data is for of the students two years after exiting and then four years after exiting. So now we've got kids who've been out of the MLL program for four years. We have to figure out, you know, where they are, you know, how many of them, how many, what the attrition was. Like, we'd actually have to go down kid by kid to figure this one out. So I'm, I'll, I'm going to look into it and I'll work with Niall Trimble to try to figure out. If it's 83 kids total, that's not a ton of student data. I mean, it's not small, but it's not like we're talking hundreds of kids. No, no, but it's also proportional to the overall number of students we serve, right? So this data then is not, no data is, as you've labeled it on here, of students who did not take the WIDA just this year? This isn't WIDA, this is SBA. So, okay, yeah, okay. This is, this is the state test because the the goal of this data set is to demonstrate the number of students who've completed their MLL experience and then have exited and took the SBA. So as I look at this, then, what I'm seeing then is this is 83 students that are classified as MLLs and their SBA. Had been. Had been exited the program. Got it. And this is their SBA data who have exited the program. This is not WIDA data. Correct. Okay. The WIDA data, yeah, absolutely. The WIDA data is this here, and that is 34 out of the 717 students we serve. Were able to exit out based on their WIDA scores. Thank you, I wasn't clear on that. And then follow-up question, if I can, and then I'll be done. August PD, what are you looking at doing for our teachers, looking at the the program coming forward? I heard in your email, the response, you were talking about Center for Applied Linguistics, which I'm glad that we're bringing that on. What else are we looking at doing for our staff? So the Center for Applied Linguistics work is specific to Frank Wagner's dual language program. So Frank Wagner is working with a consultant named Dr. Catherine Carrison, whom we've contracted utilizing a competitive grant we are awarded. So it won't be any impact on the the overall budget for the district. And they are going to undergo a process to foremost adopt a framework for dual language. Unfortunately, our dual language program at Frank Wagner is 11 years old now, and we've never undergone a formal process to just examine how we're doing. So that's, that's the first thing we're doing. Once that's established, they're going to look at the areas that they're really strong in and then look at the areas that they they could do some growth around and focus and work on that. The, what we really want to do overall with the work around supporting our MLLs district-wide has everything to do with the utilization of and evangelization of English language development strategies. We need those in every classroom so that kids get exposure to those strategies over and over and over again. So these three strategies are sentence stems, helping kids get get off to a good start with what they're going to say in response to something that's happening. Academic vocabulary, just lists of academic vocabulary. We, we were, we were in a PLC, a professional development session. And I heard Hugo Molina, our principal at Frank Wagner, put it succinctly and just wonderfully well to describe the idea behind the use of academic vocabulary. Hugo's a big football fan, so he'll bounce back and forth during the season between, say, ABC and CBS to watch football. If you're watching football on either of those two channels, the exact same game's happening, but both commentators use very, very different language to describe what's happening. We need everyone to coalesce around the same language to help our students understand and access the curriculum. So, and then the third strategy is language stems, oh, excuse me, sentence stems, language targets. And academic vocabulary, so the third one's language targets. So we, we ask our teachers to ensure they have learning targets posted. We also need a language target. We need a goal for the kid in that class on a daily basis or at least a couple of days a week, maybe the same goals, okay? Around a specific language target they're trying to acquire. Those are the three big things. Now, that's tier one, system-wide. Additionally, we want to work with our MLL teachers on more focused work that we're going to do in specific settings. And then tier three would be one-on-one work, certificated teacher with specifics, small groups or individual students who need a lot more help. That's exciting to hear. I'm teaching a grad class right now, literally on ESL assessment strategies. And this is the conversation we're having. Within the framework that you're looking at, are we still staying with our 90-10 model, though? The gradual release down to fifth grade? Yeah, so we're, we're definitely doing that at Frank, early, so K, K1. We're, and then once that's, that's established, we'll just kind of roll it up over a couple of years. Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions, Directors?
I, I love this data and nerding out about it because it helps me do my, my day job better. I feel like I see the extension of a lot of what you're talking about when I'm looking at adult learners and looking at how to support students in the area who didn't quite graduate high school. They have, you know, what you said about writing ability, I see consistently for clients who need English language acquisition and are fluent in Spanish and then have like Mixteco or Tiki as a dialect that they speak. They are better equipped to pick up English language. So, so I just really appreciate the information. And it gives me a depth of knowledge that I didn't have before, so I want to thank you for that. And then I also just appreciate that you are taking the time to explain to us how to support that work. You're telling us the work, why it's important, you're connecting it to the students who we serve, and then you're sharing with us what our staff and and district leaders need in order to help those students.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, would you mind going into a little more detail on the tiers that we're using to help solve this problem?
Yeah, so what I described is it's commonly referred to within education as multi, multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS. Quick primer on that. So in this, the special education world is where a lot of the work that happens in the classrooms today started. Special education is foundational in many ways around how we think about serving kids now. Because what special ed does is identify real specific needs that kids have and then teaching to those specific needs. So what MTSS aims to do is filter those needs through a larger lens so that you see at tier one, which is about 85% of the students we serve, 100% of the students will receive that instruction, okay? Tier two is about anywhere between roughly 10 to 15%, should be 80% tier one, excuse me, 10, 15% of kids fall into tier two. So they participated in tier one, but maybe they didn't get it and they need more help. Okay, so those kids would be falling to tier two, we get them one more help. And that help looks like evidence-based, you know, off-the-shelf curriculum that you just work with a kid around. Tier three are kids who need really specific supports. And while they may have been exposed to the tier one work, you know, what happens in your classroom on a daily basis, and maybe even be getting tier two help as well, maybe a small group or working alongside a paraprofessional. They need even more help, so that would be tier three. And that's roughly 2% of the kids we serve, up to five.
Okay, so you didn't mention one of the things in there that they're suffering on their reading right now. The one thing I know is that reading helps, like just parents reading to students or older people reading to students helps them excel in reading. Have we considered having the fifth graders, whatever, read to the younger students or another way like that?
Yeah, it's called Reading Buddies. Okay. Yeah, most, most elementary schools have it. It was interrupted by COVID. So we weren't, we couldn't manage that many kids in this small space. But Reading Buddies is a, is a typical program most elementary schools entertain where they have older kids working and reading with younger students and vice versa. One of the other benefits of Reading Buddies is that you can have maybe a third grade student who's really struggling with reading look like an absolute superstar in front of a kindergartner, which helps boost confidence, helps them feel good about reading. And that, that's a, that's a common practice we often use. And if you've got any younger siblings, have at it.
All right.
Any other questions? I have three kids, they were all each other's reading buddies during COVID. It's great. Okay, moving on to agenda item 5.02, land acknowledgement, and I believe that's you as well, Chris.
Yep, stay, one second. Okay, I don't need to reintroduce myself, do I? Okay, thank you. Purpose of this presentation, to share the work around a land acknowledgement that our committee embarked upon last school year with the board. So what is it? Land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of this land and the enduring relationship that exists between indigenous people and their traditional territories. It's a common practice now in many parts of North America where these acknowledgements are made just to recognize that we are on the ancestral lands of people who've been here for over 4,000 years. So I think I just read my first slide without reading it, or second slide here. It reminds us to reflect on our past and our present. We're on the land of people who've stewarded it for, for since time immemorial and recognizes the relationship between indigenous people and their traditional territories. The other thing is, in this case, why we'd adopt one is that, you know, Monroe School District is the lead district for our Indian education program. We are the head of a consortium that represents Monroe, Sultan and Snohomish School Districts. And many school districts in here in Snohomish County already do this. Arlington, Edmonds, Everett, the Everett Community College, Everett City Council, Marysville, North Shore, South would be. All these folks have already got this in place and they've been doing it for a little while now. Typically, board meetings start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by like land acknowledgement. That's usually the, the order of operations for most folks. So when we drafted this, what we did was we reached out foremost to our consortium partners, got their leadership. So we worked with like Becky Brockman, who is a former executive director of teaching and learning up in Snohomish. We worked with Michael Barron, the executive director of teaching and learning at Sultan. I was there, we brought in a docent from the Burke Museum, members of Sky Comish, Domaish, Call Me Tulay, the tribes. And it was a, it was a really nice rounded out group of people, many of whom had some sort of leadership role in, in and among the many tribes that are represented here among the Coast Salish people. We met about four times over three months, a couple more times in addition to that, just kind of side things where we go and reach out to direct people specifically coming back. Emailed stuff was, one of the analogies that's often used, we're working with one of our leadership coaches is the accordion. So you go out, you reach out for feedback, come in together, smaller group, work together, craft, go back out again, get feedback, come back together again, craft, re-revised, redraft. And we provided a draft to the the school board back in February 21, or at least the the superintendent at the time, I'm not sure if you pushed it to the school board. And this is the draft. The Sky Comish Valley Indian Education Consortium acknowledges with the deepest respect and gratitude that we are on the ancestral and sovereign lands of the Coast Salish people. We recognize the diversity of the native community that has inhabited this land for millennia. We honor the treaty rights, the land itself, and our responsibility and relationship to it as its stewards. Many indigenous people thrive in this place alive and strong. That last sentence was very important to folks because it recognizes and acknowledges that native people, native to the Northwest, and native to the land that is North America haven't gone anywhere. They're still here, and it's not just acknowledgement of the past, it's acknowledgement of the present as well. Happy to take some questions. I have a question. Are, since we're leading this consortium with Snohomish and Sultan, are they planning on implementing this? Have you talked with your counterparts in the other districts to know that they're also doing this? So I, I'm not sure because we've hit the pause button on this and we haven't really revisited it since February last school year. So that's something I I'm looking forward to talking with them about.
Any other questions?
Yeah, always. I just want to ask if it would be appropriate to add to the draft specific to Monroe if if we were going to say the Monroe School District in partnership with the Sky Comish Valley Indian Education Consortium?
Yes, in fact, I responded to that, yeah. So it would be. Yes, um, in fact, I, I responded to that, yeah, so um it would be more than appropriate. The, the goal for the, the group that drafted this was to offer it to the board for their revisions to make it their own. And that I think it would be an entirely appropriate uh way of approach it and adopt it, should you wish to.
I just wanna, I was excited to see this on our agenda. Um, I'm also excited to see if adopted, um, how it shows up throughout our district. Other places we're using it, if, if it's happening um as a WIA rep and looking at our activities. Seeing if it shows up there in addition to board meetings. Um, and then just in, in learning about land acknowledgements myself, you know, the, the constructing, excuse me, constructive criticism I've seen is just that that shouldn't be the only thing. I think we're already demonstrating, you know, by being the lead of the consortium um that we're committed to the work and, and I'm excited to see more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, folks.
For hanging out with us.
Make a motion that we take a break. A ten-minute break? Fifteen? Ten? Five, seven? Five? Five.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, I'll say bye. There we go, five-minute breaks, we'll be back at seven forty-five. Hello and welcome back. It is seven forty-six PM and we are moving on to agenda item six point zero one, consideration of courageous conversation proposal. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School Board of Directors approve the consideration of courageous conversations proposal.
Is there a second? Is there a second? There's a motion on the table that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the courageous conversation proposal.
I'll second it so we can have a conversation.
Thank you. There is, uh, so let's see. There's a motion, a second, that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the courageous conversation proposal discussion. Would anyone like to start?
I'll start. So some of the other things, first, I, I want to make it very clear. I understand that DEI work is desperately needed in this district and I understand that it is important. I am one hundred percent not against it, I am for it, okay? We, so I agree also that we need to have these conversations, they are incredibly important conversations to have. For a little bit of background, I come from a very diverse um cultural and ethical family, or not ethnical, sorry, cultural and ethical family. From Native American to Japanese, Korean, to Black and to Latina, okay? I love my family, all of my family. I agree that we have tough work to do and nobody should ever be made to feel less than or like they don't belong in this district. Okay, here is part of my other issue, when I look at courageous conversations collectively as a whole. Things that are damaging and hurtful to all. Minority students are emotional and not intellectual or task-oriented and they're nonverbal. How is it okay to stereotype minority students in that manner? That is exactly what this book does. Color commentary is emotional and personal and white talk is verbal, intellectual and task-oriented. It has already divided us and put us into categories, that to me is not okay. It, it points out too, one of the things that I found slightly disturbing, as a North American co- culture, we often recognize and embrace and promote people of color whose ideology is aligned with more conservative white ideologies, now we're running into politics. And it also says, the appointment of Clarence Thomas, in the book, it doesn't even give him the dignity of calling him justice. That man has worked hard to be where he is at, he deserves that recognition. This book doesn't even give it to him. The appointment of justice Clarence Thomas to the US Supreme Court is illustrative of this phenomenon. His appointment provided a way to racially diversify the Supreme Court without diversifying its racial ideology. Right, so these people of color express a point of view that exists outside the majority viewpoint among people of color, i.e. what is it, what did it call it, white conservatism? Okay, so now we're saying that if you're a minority, your opinion doesn't matter because you don't fall in line with a certain racial ideology. That to me is wrong, you don't do that to anyone. Especially not someone who is considered a minority. I believe that we have work to do, it is important work to do. But we have to have the right tool and once you go down a road and you use a certain tool, there is no putting that genie back in the bottle. We have work to do, our students are worth it, all of our students are worth it, justice and liberty for all, period. I want to do this work, but I want to do it with the right tools that is going to help bring this community together. I'm not afraid of being uncomfortable, I'm not afraid of having hard conversations. I'm not afraid of any of that because my family, my diverse family, my diverse friends, our diverse community, our diverse students, they are all one hundred percent worth it. The tool has to be right though, and everything that I have seen from this tool, it's not going to be what does it. If this book is required reading of all of our educators. And it sits there and it says that Black and Indigenous people of color will continue to attend US public schools. And they deserve qualified and skilled teachers who love them instead of fear them. It is telling them, all minority students, Black and Indigenous people of color, that your educators who are white fear you. That they do not know how to educate you. That they are not going to be able to provide that for you and I think that that is wrong. We should not be putting any educator into that box based upon the color of their skin. This right here tells me nothing about what's in here or what's in here or defines your, your value and meaning as a human being to me. I will fight racism anywhere and everywhere that I see it because it is one hundred percent wrong. But by golly, I want to do this with the right tool in this district, I want to do this right, it's that important. And that is where I stand on this, which is why I cannot and will not vote yes for this.
Can I ask a question in response? So um given that we as board directors rely on professionals within the district to do the work of, you know, this, this is their profession, right? And we're here to provide oversight. And given the history that has been shared with us about the work done to come to the point where this is being presented to us and where we are having multiple groups within the district from, you know, diverse representation of collaboration within our district. And, and this is the proposal that they've given to us. I'm, I'm wondering if you can explain, um, I understand, I understand and I hear your personal concerns about the book and about the training. But I, I would ask that as non-professionals in this environment who were not part of that work to get to this point of the proposal, I would just ask you to speak to that a little bit, like what do you think about the work that has been done by these people who we rely on to run our school district and teach our kids?
So, asking the question ahead of time, who has read the book? Who on the task force has read the book, who knows what it is that they're putting forward? Okay, when I met with two particular people earlier this week, one had read the first edition many years ago and the other had not read the book whatsoever. Why are we as a board being presented with something when not all of the people have read the book and understand the material that is in it that we're putting forward? And the entire board, ourselves, we have not had the opportunity to go through and read the book. Okay, I don't believe Jeremiah has read the book, you said you just got it and started, Jen's not all the way through the book and I have no idea about Chuck. So, that, that is also my question, I understand trusting and hearing the voices of people within our community and that is valuable and that is what we need. But at the same time, I need to know that they've gone through and that they've looked at this extensively and, and read it. But at the same time, I can't ignore my conscience, you know, and what this is regardless. If I have somebody who comes to me and tells me that, well, you know, this is right, this is the way you do it, you need to, you know, eat ten donuts every day because this is going to make you healthy. And they're some sort of a professional, I'm not just going to sit there and take it blindly, which is why I got the book, I read the book. When I do anything, I want to be able to stand on truth and facts and exactly what it is that the book says. I didn't want it to be opinions and feelings, this is exactly what it says. And then, you know.
So, so I will tell you that some of the quotes you've read and, and the way that you have interpreted those quotes is different from how I interpret them. I'm, um, I'm, I uh, audiobooks are more accessible for me. So you asked me what chapter I'm on and I'm not sure, I'm three hours into the audiobook and I think it's a fourteen-hour recording. But what, what is really standing out to me as you talk about very valid, I acknowledge all of the concerns that you have about this book and I I can certainly understand some of them in particular, why they would be concerning to you. What I, the way that I understand you reading them or interpreting them is that they are being given to you as factual, is the only way that there, you know, there's, if it says that um that Black people are loud or that Black people are angry, that if you see that passage in the book, you are taking that verbatim as the only truth that there is. And when I read the book, that's not the way that I interpret those passages. So I can see a passage like that presented and say, well, yes, that perspective is true for some people. And it's not true for others, but we can't leave out one or the other. And so again, I um, and, and then I also just caution, you know, us reading a book on our own is not doing the actual work. I think that's part of the purpose of the proposal. Part of my reason for asking that selfish question of how do directors get to be involved? Because I think that we need people helping us and guiding us through the work, so I would ask you to do that with me. Yeah.
Yeah, and I have no problem doing that, I have no problem sitting in on courageous conversation training to see what that is like. I mean, I'm not, I'm not against doing that or putting in work to get things done, I just want to make sure that at the end of the day that it is the right work.
Can you give us a date of it, June fifteenth training to be able to attend? I'm not able to go to that, I'm still, this is the last week of my school year for my district. Are there other trainings that we can attend in the near future?
We will follow up with that.
I would love to know that. I appreciate you giving us a heads up and letting us know that you're reading through the book. I appreciate Molly that you've read so far through the book and the board is doing this, I, I hope Chuck is as well. It's been a very busy week for me and I'm just starting to dive into it. I could probably devour it in about four days, but I need the time to do that. I am uncomfortable with moving. We have a workshop and then a presentation to do this and this is not a smooth transition and we're going to spend almost a hundred thousand of our tax dollars on a training to make a decision when I don't know enough about it and I feel like our board has a split decision on it. I would like more time, I'm not saying yes or no on it, but if we could even move this to our next board meeting. I would feel a lot more comfortable because I feel like it could give us the time, especially if I could attend a meeting in the meantime. Is that meeting on the fifteenth, is it in the afternoon, is it during the day? I don't remember, my computer's dead.
It's the fifteenth from eight A into ten A.
So Director Kim, will I ask you a question? Because I tried to do some research when I, because I hadn't ever seen this before. And so in addition to trying to listen to the audiobook, um, I tried to do some research about where is this thing, right? Like I haven't heard of it, is it new? And I found, certainly it's been within the Seattle Public School District. I think it, if I remember correctly, it was like two thousand two, two thousand three. It's been around a long time, it was at the um Bellevue College for a long time. And I believe that I found a couple of um resources or references to it in the North Shore School District. I know they have a pretty robust um equity DEI, um, an entire team and lots of resources. And so I was curious if that is something that you have come up, and I don't, I don't know if it's okay to ask this. But as you're, as you're an employee of that district. Is it something that you have heard about before? Is it something that other educators who you have either professional or personal relationships with have participated in? And what has been their experience?
Yeah, we have a training, um, we have our early release dates, just like Monroe has early release Fridays, we have early release Wednesdays and certain number of them every so often are district directed days. And we have what's called our racial educational justice, which is a department, which is an entire department, has all kinds of material and curriculum. Um, and we've gone through a lot of material this year, this is not a name that I have run across and it's not. And again, I've only been in the US for the last two years. Um, and so I could act as, ask some of my colleagues and they were unaware of it. Now whether the, the department uses this as part of their materials and then they don't. And they put a footnote somewhere or whatever, that hasn't stood out to me, but as far as I know, our staff does not know that they've gone through a courageous conversation training itself. We've had lots of PD in this kind of an area, but not um, not specifically with this title. And I've asked several of my partner teachers about that and they, they didn't recognize it, they've been there a while. So I'm sure the district may have it as a resource, but as far as putting in front of staff specifically, because I want to know before I make a decision on this. And I, I've tried to do some digging myself and I feel like it's a teeter totter of information and I want to sift through the weeds and I'm not ready to say, yes, let's spend this money and do this right now tonight, I'm just not there. I'm gonna read the book, I'll probably be done with it by the weekend and, but I'm just not ready to make a decision right now. That's how I feel. I'll say this though, before, I, I want to echo, I think, I don't think there's any of us here that don't believe that this is work that is not important. I think there's any of us here that feel like the horrible conversation that we, we listened to during our comments, by what comments last board meeting, were not horrendous. I want to find the right tool to do it right, that's where I'm at. And I'm not sure that this is it, I'm not convinced and I feel like I'm really nervous about what we're gonna do. And the fact that when we asked Deanne, has any of the staff been through the training or any of the materials yet? It's just what's on their website. I'm not ready to, to pull a six-figure trigger on, on something like that just yet.
I also just want to add really quick. Just in case the two of you didn't know this, the Seattle Public School District was sued over this. In June two thousand seven, the Supreme Court actually leveled this decision. In parents involved in community schools versus the Seattle School District, number one, the Seattle School District lost. Okay, uh, Justice Thomas argued that these and other aspects of the Seattle Schools' obsession with white privilege made it inappropriate to blindly defer to school districts when they use race in student assignments. So I feel like we're going to be opening ourselves up to potential lawsuits at the same time. And it is a lot of money. And our budget right now, I mean, we know it is, you have a failed levy, we have no money. And it's, I just don't know where it's going to come from as much as I want to have money to do things with.
To your point, Molly, I think that we are already open to potential lawsuits. I would argue that every piece of information as presented on the front of the Herald about race or every video that we've seen on Snapchat or Instagram. I would argue that we've already opened ourselves up to that and at this point, I just think a hundred thousand dollars, okay, but we have kids who do not feel safe, who are being targeted, who cannot go to an adult who, to have a conversation, I have my own child who just spoke to me two nights ago. Who is an ASV leader, who is popular, he's an athlete, he's well-equipped, we teach him everything, I think you and I have similar parenting styles. I think you and I have similar parenting styles. And he has four classes with a classmate, who insists on sitting next to him, turns his hat backward and says, yo, 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 I'm black, I'm black. And so many other things and he has no one to go to for four periods. Another girl who is at school, then there's less than a handful of black students at his school, was spat at and called a gorilla. Nothing happened. So I just, I totally understand that it's a hundred thousand dollars. However, I just consider, I wonder what it would be like if it was your student, your son or daughter who was talking to you, telling you about these stories. And that's my son, he knows who he is, he know, he knows whose opinion matters most. He knows that he's amazing. And he is still unsure and will still come to me in tears because he's not sure how to navigate this and there isn't an adult who is prepared and I think they all have great hearts. We're so blessed to have the leaders that we do in our schools, however, they're not equipped and they don't know how to support him in this way. And that's just a couple of stories, I won't even get into the four year old daughter who I have, who went to a private Christian school in the area. And was, lost all her friends. Because two girls said she was different, she was brown, she has curly hair, we can't be friends with her. For private education that I was paying for and nothing was done. And now this discouraged her from going to school, she didn't want to go to school. It challenged her academically, however, I mean, she's one of the smartest girls now in second grade. She's a fighter, but what I'm saying is that, God forbid that that ever be your own child and you're having these conversations. And you have something in front of you that costs a hundred thousand dollars. That might, yeah, it might fail, but it might also work, it might also help support our staff. And I'm, I'm not sure, like, what we've been doing isn't working. Class of oh three, what we've been doing isn't working, we had nooses back then. We had urine or we had Mexican flags and urinals getting peed on back then. There's, it's in the paper since, I've been here since oh three. I, I just can't imagine your own children doing that and then what does that mean academically? And we have someone who's a leader here in our school district, who has conversations with teachers. She's telling us this is the material that we need. We have a leader who has done an amazing job with our teams here in our district office, who's also telling us this is what we need. We have staff who's telling us this is what we need, we have students of color, all black students who I personally know, all telling us that they are being targeted, that they are being called monkeys. That they feel like they don't belong, they can't study, they now have to do virtual stu- uh, school. Like actually go get out of school and do virtually because they do not feel safe. But a hundred thousand dollars is too much for us to pay to maybe help them feel better. Maybe help support teachers, maybe provide safe schools for all students. I understand and I sat here and listened on purpose, I am, I am different on this board. I am different every, every room I go to, every room and that's okay with me. But what I wasn't able to do when I was in high school was speak up. I had to assimilate blonde hair in high school. If I spoke differently, if I acted differently, then people were, accept me, I'm not like those Latinas. I'm Jennifer, it's different, it's not Enriquez, it's Enriquez. Right? Then I was treated differently, then I was accepted, kind of, kind of, not all the way. Because I was still Latina, still brown, so kind of. I would argue some of the things you said Molly, some of the statements that you read, I would argue that maybe that's why I have the position I have. And that's just me being courageous and vulnerable right now. I am Christian, I am a woman, I grew up here, my husband does, you know, some stuff and, I don't, I don't know, I a hundred percent, that thought crosses my mind, maybe that's why I do have a position I have, that's why I am on this board. But that's okay, I'll use my voice anyway. So as just a person who you've come to know and trust, who does, who does give grace and empathy and understanding. I just, uh, I know, I hear that you're saying that this work has to be done. I hear everyone saying that, but if we're not willing to back it with the resources and it means nothing. And my son will just continue to sit there and be mocked, a leader. Be mocked and that's okay. We tell him what he needs to know at home, he knows whose opinion matters and we pray on it, tomorrow's a new day and keep it pushing. But I can't imagine, like I, that doesn't have to be his story. I have a son who has a disability and he's black and brown, I don't even want to know what that's going to look like when he gets to middle school. Or to high school and he already deals with some of those things. I just, I, I can't imagine, Jada girl is the only one who looks like her in her school, the, the entire school. Of five hundred fifty, I believe. But we pray over it, we push, we pour into her, she knows who she is, she's strong. And I just ask that we equip our staff, equip our leaders, if it's a maybe, then maybe it just doesn't happen to more students, maybe we do something different, like maybe we just do something different. But that's me being courageous and vulnerable, so just giving, showing you a little bit of my heart and you've come to know me, we are friends. And I know where your heart is, I, I do, I know, and I know that there are elements in here that feel really uncomfortable. But as a person who has had uncomfortable conversations, as the person who sat here in front of everyone talking about race and the only one on this panel who's brown, who is sitting here thinking, well, at some point the brown girl's going to speak. I just can't be the first one, because if I am, I might come across as aggressive or angry, so I have to take my turn, I'll wait. And listen. Again, just me being courageous and vulnerable with you, because I can now, because I've lived life since high school. I was able to go to college, meet a group that accepted me, that poured into me, that loved me, that I felt comfortable speaking Spanish. That's why my Spanish sounds a little funny sometimes, is I wasn't, I, I stopped speaking it in high school, I stopped. Because then I was more accepted if I didn't speak Spanish. And that's just what I'd like to share.
President Bumpus.
Hey Chuck.
Hey. When we appointed you, there was, I don't know, fourteen or fifteen different candidates and we went through all of them and we selected you because you were the best candidate. Not because of anything about your ethnicity or your color, you were the best candidate and we selected you. And we're so thankful that you're a president and you're our leader, so I just want that to be understood. We had previously looked at courageous conversations at the last board, last members of a board, the prior board. And uh, we rejected it because of the cost and we didn't think it was, it was appropriate. The conversation here is that if we don't do courageous conversations, we're not, nothing's going to happen. Well, I can, I can guarantee there's other tools and there's other resources available. There's other programs other than courageous conversations that will be a fit, that'll be a tool that we can use for the school, uh, for our students and our teachers. And I think that there are probably excellent alternatives that we could evaluate and that we could approve and that we could spend our resources on.
Chuck, I don't, we never took a look at it, we listened to the workshop, so it was when I was new on the board, we listened to the workshop. We had one of the presenters come on, but it never made it to the agenda. And so we were never able to have a discussion or vote on it, but we did have a workshop two years ago on it.
I just remembered that we didn't want to move forward with it and that the idea was uh, because of the cost and because of the content. But I'm not, I'm not doubting what you just said.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think I was part of that conversation.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I value you so much, just as a human being, your heart is good. You are a good friend. I appreciate your perspective and all thanks as a fellow Christian woman within this community. The examples of children not being treated okay and being bullied and racist things being said, it break my heart. They do, it doesn't matter whose kid it is, it's somebody's kid and they matter. Money, man, if I could, if I could throw a million dollars, two million dollars at it, I'd do it at the drop of a hat to make a difference and make the change. Money really isn't, isn't the big determining factor in any of this. And I, I just want you to know that, I see you, you are beautiful, you are strong. You're amazing, you're an amazing mom and amazing human being and I just, I value you and I need you to know that.
I know Molly, I know Director Barnes and I know, I know you have a good heart, I just um, I hate delaying this work anymore than we have, when I originally was appointed, I came on two years. I wasn't part of any conversation with courageous conversations, I just remember being super excited to um, to have that discussion. Kim, I do have a question for you. I'm wondering what, uh, how we would cover the cost of any, any uh, DEI work, including this.
So with the levy failure and trying to balance the budget, um, learning and teaching took a hit. Uh, I would say we probably took a larger percentage of the hit than any of us were comfortable. And we had some priorities laid out and when we started having the conversation with MEA, we looked at what we were prioritizing. Some of the things that we would really like to do, that our, our staff has been asking for, job embedded coaches and some other stuff like that. We completely reorganized all of our priorities so that the DEI work and the PLC work and not the whole PLC thing, but just the Dennis King piece will come from our um, grant budget. So we've cut more things that we would do so that we could do that, because we believe that this is a priority. And this is um, what the collective group decided was the best way to move forward.
I thought we were employing that uh, Wassa, Wasla, is that uh, what, what's happening with that, isn't that a tool that we're using to, uh, to approach this? It seems like it's multi-tiered the way it was covered. Uh, are they not able to, to be productive and get anything accomplished?
So the work with Wasla is not to provide professional development and content. They help us with um, research or gathering materials and they facilitate our meetings and they provide opportunities for us to work with other school districts and get feedback. They're just the vehicle, but it's up to us to decide what our priorities are and what we're going to use.
Kim, so we figured out how to carve out funding for this, whether it's this tool or another tool. Are there other, when Deanne spoke, and I don't mean to put you to speak for her, but um, with your director, learning and teaching hat on, um, is, is there, are there other second choices that we have? And if we do, what do they cost, what does that look like as well?
The costs definitely vary, we don't have proposals from all of the groups that we were looking at and researching. But we will be committed to whatever, if this doesn't pass, then we are going to go back to meeting with MEA and come up with Plan B. But that's not going to be something that I, I do on my own, the department does on its own or Monroe School District does on its own. We have appendix O for a reason and we've talked about, my leadership style is collaborative. And so even though we have the appendix O, I believe, and partnering with MEA. So we would have to, if the board votes no tonight, then we'll have to reconvene and try to figure something out. But we will be having to take more time to do that.
So this right now is the only recommendation that you have, you don't have another option?
No, sir.
In your perspective, looking at an August training, early August for admin and late August for search staff, after that, what, what do you have a plan, next steps, or is it, this is our silver bullet that we're like hoping that this changes everything? What is the Monroe plan that you see with our staff?
So this was going to be a start and my understanding is that after this initial launch, it's not quite as expensive, um, and I believe if I remember, we were looking at a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for three years. Um, and learning and teaching would be more than willing to forego any of the work that we were doing, thinking about doing with coaching or any of the other stuff and continue to concentrate on professional learning communities and the DEI work. I do have another thought, um, and I, I can't remember if I had a conversation with Jen or not. What we're asking for, this contract is for this summer. It seems expensive, it's about two hundred and something dollars a staff member who would be participating. And Jeremiah, I'm sorry, Director Campbell, you know that we send people to Phoenix for seven hundred and something dollar workshops where, you know, we're paying for plane fare, so two hundred and something dollars for all of our staff to have some training and we're working on how would that look for our, all of our staff, not just our certificated staff. I would like to propose, because we'd have to put any other contract in front of you, correct? Let's do the courageous conversations for this summer, invite you to come in and participate. Time to read the book, time to have conversations, opportunities to participate. Then we would come back together with MEA, we also would like to evaluate again what we think about this before we started embarking on a longer term proposal. This is only for the summer.
Thank you for giving me a parameter on that, I appreciate that.
Further discussion? Are we ready to vote? Okay, the motion reads that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the courageous conversation proposal. All in favor, raise your hand. All oppose? The agenda item has passed three to two. Agenda item seven point zero four, approval of superintendent consent agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, there is a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors accept all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor, raise your hand. All oppose, the agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item eight point zero four, approval of board consent. Moving on to agenda item eight point zero four, approval of board consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second, there's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda. Dated June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. All in favor, raise your hand. I'll oppose. The agenda item has passed five to zero. And agenda item nine point zero one, board reports common suggestions. It is City of Monroe, two thousand twenty-two Pride Month, and we have a proclamation from Mayor Thomas. Ms. Johnson, would you like to read that?
I would. Thank you. Proclamation recognizing June twenty twenty-two as Pride Month. Whereas the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer or questioning LGBTQ plus people. Was born on June twenty eighth, nineteen sixty-nine in New York City from the events of the Stonewall uprising. And whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people. But the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for the LGBTQ plus community and LGBTQ plus people. Simply for being who they are and for who they love, continue to face discrimination, harassment, hate crimes, hate speech. Violence, disparities in healthcare, housing and employment, and in the denial of basic human rights. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community continues to be vulnerable to violence, homelessness and death. And in recognition of the fact that LGBTQ plus youth are at a much greater risk of suicide than their peers. And further, that the UCLA Williams Institute indicates sexual minority adults are twice as likely as the general population. To have experienced homelessness in their lifetime. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community has had immeasurable positive impact to the cultural. Civic and economic successes of our country and city. And whereas the landmark Supreme Court decision of twenty fifteen guaranteeing marriage equality in all fifty states. Was a historic victory for the LGBTQ plus community and continues to affirm our belief that we are all. More free when we are treated as equals. And whereas in no small part to the determination and dedication of the LGBTQ plus rights movement. More members of the LGBTQ plus community are living their lives openly today than ever before. And while the LGBTQ plus rights movement has achieved great progress, there is more work to be done by all of us to the extent promised. Excuse me, to extend the promise of our country to every person, for all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. And should be free to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination and violence. And whereas the Monroe Equity Council will host the second Monroe Pride event on Sunday, June twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. An event that honors the worth and value of every human being. And whereas Imagine Monroe aspires that our community is and will be a safe place where everyone feels at home. And where everyone belongs. Now therefore, I Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the City of Monroe, Washington. Do hereby recognize the month of June twenty twenty-two as Pride Month. And I call upon everyone to listen to the voices of the LGBTQ plus community. Who contribute to the communities we live in today. Honor the legacy of the LGP, LGBTQ plus rights movement. Acknowledge the injustices that have injured and continue to injure the LGBTQ plus community, both today. And within our nation's history. Condemn and confront prejudice, bigotry. And violence against our LGBTQ plus neighbors. Eliminate prejudice wherever it exists. And promote our unity and diversity and love our neighbors by working to and realizing liberty. And justice for all people. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Board directors, any comments? Go ahead, Director Campbell.
So I think I just want to say congratulations to all of the Monroe graduates. It's really bummed I couldn't be there. Apparently I missed the pileup on the trestle. But I had a graduation of my two twin godsons in Eastern Washington and drove back at one o'clock in the morning. So congratulations to all our Monroe graduates.
All right, I'm going to do my own too. So I also want to talk about graduations. I got to speak at Leaders in Learning Graduation. Which I was really scared to do. I was terrified, and everyone was so kind. And I did not fall over, and I didn't distract from celebrating all of the amazing graduates. Who, who walked across that stage that night, and the amazing educators and staff who have supported them. It was, it was truly memorable, and I just thank everyone for allowing me to attend. Then the next day, I got to do the M H S graduation, which was huge. And a really fun experience with my fellow directors. It was wonderful. I've never shaken that many hands. In that shorter period of time in my life, I think it was around three hundred and sixty students. It was amazing, and kudos to Director Whitfield for helping a student get through doing a backflip on stage. And holding the, the kid's hat. It was incredible. It was really cool. I want to also say that my kiddos had an amazing time with the senior school visit that happened at Maltby. I would also like to honor staff members leaving Maltby. Teresa Scheit, Linda Stavsky, Becky Baker, and Wendy Marsh. I am looking forward to getting my Addams Family shirt that came. And then lastly, I just want to say, I had the opportunity to. Attend the Pride event yesterday with our community and, and my children, and it was a beautiful event. I hope many of you were able to attend, and if not this year, I hope you'll come next year. People were joyous. People expressed themselves and came as who they were. And, and it was just, it was beautiful. And I think the community of Monroe for coming out like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Chuck. Director Whitfield, anything to add?
Yeah. We had a blast at graduation. My fellow directors and I. It was, it was refreshing. It was rewarding. We laughed. It was such celebration. And I think that's one of the most positive things I've done as a school board director. Last year, we were in the rain and we were kind of off to the side, and this time we were. In the lights, so to speak, but it was, boy, it was a blast. Just, it really recharged my, my battery. I went to the Equity Academy at. Our place for the seventh grade. It was a good event. Was well balanced. Good learning, good lessons. Something interesting about that. Talk to the principal. That was the first time in the last two years that the kids have been to an assembly. So just think about that, two years, the kids have not been to an assembly. I think that just speaks to itself, and the fact that. It was a good, a good learning tool. And valuable lessons were learned. That was a good event. It was very well done.
Thank you, Director Whitfield.
I too want to give a second shout out to all of our graduates from Leader in Learning and Monroe High School. Going to both of those graduations, man, it just, it fills your cup, Jen, like you say. When you see the success and you're able to acknowledge it and celebrate with those individuals who've worked so hard to get to where they're at. Makes me sad for when that day comes for me with my three kids, but I am so looking forward to doing that again. On Friday for Sky Valley, just celebrating the successes there and doing it all again next year, man. I swear, that's like the highlight of doing this, is being able to be up on that stage and celebrate our incredible, amazing students. That we have in this district. So, yeah, it was just awesome. Great experience.
Thank you, directors. And I will close. I also was at graduation. I have to apologize every time I speak in public, because I just say things, just come out. I think I talked about my sweat. At graduation, I opened up that way, but you know, you got to be authentic with it. But I wanted to say, one of the quotes I read was Harriet Tubman, and it said, every great dream begins with a dreamer. Always remember you have within you the strength, the patience and the passion to reach for the stars and to change the world. I just love that. And go Bearcats. Oh, yes. We're still going. All right, agenda item ten point zero one. We have an executive session. To discuss with legal counsel representing the district litigation or potential litigation. And we will go ahead and take thirty minutes. And we'll be in exec- executive session for thirty minutes until nine oh five P M. It is nine oh five P M, and tonight's board meeting is adjourned. Thanks, G.